Welcome to our meeting. The date is July 22, 2025. The time is 7:00 PM. This is an open meeting of the Grand Island City Council. The city of Grand Island abides by the Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is displayed in the back of this room as required by state law. The city council may vote to go into closed session on an agenda item as allowed by state law. Now I ask that you stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city clerk will now perform roll call.
Council President Sheard.
Present.
Councilmember Stelk. Councilmember Conley.
Present.
Councilmember Nickerson.
Present.
Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Hazy.
Present.
Councilmember Mendoza will be absent. Councilmember O'Neil.
Present.
Councilmembers Pollak and Lambfair will be absent. And Mayor Steele.
Present. Also present are Jill Grenier, the city clerk, Laura McAlune, the city administrator, Patrick Brown, the assistant city administrator and chief financial officer, Carrie Fisk, the city attorney, and Keith Kurtz, the public works director. Individuals who have appropriate items for city council consideration should complete the request for future agenda items form located at the information booth. If the issue can be handled administratively without council action, notification will be provided. If the item is scheduled for a meeting or study session, notification of the date will be given. Councilmember Nickerson has asked to remove consent agenda items 7C, 7I, and 7K. Are there any other consent agenda items that council members would like removed? Mr. Stelk.
Item number 7L.
Thank you, Mr. Stelk. Hearing no others, we will continue. A sign up sheet was available in the lobby for individuals wishing to provide input on any of tonight's agenda items. If you did not sign up to speak on an agenda item, please come forward. State your name and the agenda topic on which you will be speaking. No one has come forward, so we will continue. The first item on our agenda is recognizing Celine Swan for 25 years of service with the Grand Island Public Library. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight, I have the privilege of recognizing someone who's quietly but powerfully shaped our community for the past 25 years, our outstanding library director, Celine Swan. Now, Celine hasn't been director the whole time. She worked her way up step by step, earning the respect of her colleagues, patrons, and more than a few dewy decimal loyalists along the way as a library director. Over the years, Celine has helped transform the Grand Island Public Library into something more than a place for books. It's become a place where stories are shared and everyone feels at home, whether they're researching, reading, or just needing some reliable Wi-Fi. From launching innovative programs to bringing in top-notch guest speakers, Celine has always kept the library evolving while keeping its original spirit intact. Celine, thank you for 25 years of creativity, commitment, and community. You made a difference in more lives than you'll ever know and we are deeply grateful to have you as part of the city of Grand Island family. And before Mrs. Grenier and I present you with an award, I see that Mr. Dave Janda would like to speak on this agenda item. Please come forward, sir.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Celine. I was going to bring a champagne bottle, but I thought the cork, once I pulled the cork, it'd probably hit somebody in the face, so I better not. I remember her folks. They are very thoughtful, humble, hardworking. And I feel that Celine build onto this and she is every bit of that. So I congratulate her.
Thank you, Mr. Janda. Very well put. Mrs. Grenier, please join me down front to recognize Mrs. Swan. Celine, we express our appreciation for your 25 years of service with this certificate, which states, "We hereby express our sincere appreciation to Celine Swan for your loyalty, diligence, and dedicated service during your tenure with the city of Grand Island." Signed by me and by the city administrator Laura McAlune. And Mrs. Grenier has a city of Grand Island pin to present to you. Spencer wants to take our picture and then we're going to have you say a few words, okay?
All right. Well, thank you for the kind words, Mayor. And also, it's very humbling to come here. And Dr. Janda was my dentist back in the day. He's probably fixed every tooth in my mouth. But I stayed up really late writing a huge, long speech for everyone. But basically, it comes down to, I want to thank our staff, our patrons, our great city administrators I get to work with every day, and my family, my husband, my dogs. But my huge speech, which is really long, is just, "Thank you for letting me do what I love to do every day and for making a difference in my life because I've gotten back so much more than what I was able to give." Thank you all.
Our next agenda item is the fiscal year 2026 Emergency Management Budget Proposal. Good evening, Mr. Rosenlund. It's nice to see you.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to present our budget today. Just a few highlights. We'll start right off the bat with our largest group of expenses is personnel. It's about 85 or 90% of our expenses. They're going up only about 0.9%. We don't have any changes to FTEs, no inclusions, and no transfers. So everything pretty much stays the same there. Operating expenses went up about 1%. Some of our largest bills to CDIT are actually going down this next year. We did purchase that new evaluation tool, Comms Coach. And so that's one, that is probably the largest increase in our budget. They sort of evened out. And we do anticipate additional costs for data connectivity for the new radio system. We'll be paying additional costs to the Nebraska Radio Interruptibility Network, or NREM, for that connectivity piece. We're pleased to say, as far as our capital projects go, that the radio project is proceeding well. Nearly all the equipment has been ordered, has arrived. The bulk of it is actually downstairs waiting for install. We are waiting for one piece to be shipped from Israel. We anticipate that that shouldn't take too terribly long. We did pay the second invoice, which was 60% of that $3 million, or $1.8 million check. That is the largest check I've ever approved and I was slightly uncomfortable with the number of zeros on that check. But we are, that leaves only about $450,000 of that project left. That will come out in two additional invoices. One after all the equipment is installed for about $300,000. And then the last $150,000 will be upon the final acceptance of the project. We anticipate cutting over to the new radio project December, January of this coming year. As you may remember, 75% of all that project will be covered by that federal grant and the city and the county are splitting the 25% match. Every year, we budget for two outdoor warning sirens, either for replacement. If they fail throughout the year or near the end of the year, we try to find, if we find one that's been causing us some trouble, we'll replace it as a preemptive replacement rather than waiting for it to fail. So far, I think we're doing pretty well. We've replaced one this year. We still have a little bit of funding. We're finding also that the radio receiver boxes are starting to age out too. And so occasionally, the device on the top is okay, but that receiver device needs to be replaced. We are still going to be maintaining our UHF radio network. We have a number of agencies that are unable to transition to the statewide radio system or that 800 megahertz radio system, largely due to the expensive cost of the mobile and handheld radios. And so particularly for our county fire departments, we will be maintaining the UHF system and we always try to keep at least one UHF repeater on the shelf in case we have one fail. And so this $8,000 is one to always, if we have one on the shelf now, if that gets used, we'll replace it and put another one on the shelf. We are going to be upgrading the camera and security system that we have in the emergency management building on North Road. This camera system will replace the legacy one we installed when we built the building. Those devices are Chinese-made and we're working to replace them with American-made devices to meet with cybersecurity requirements. This will also allow us to link those cameras indoors to the rest of the city's alarm and camera system. And so we'll have a large citywide system and this will sync us up with them. I have a $10,000 budget line item for a drone. We have utilized the sheriff's department or the police department or the utilities drones in the past for damage assessment. But this last year, we had a number of our cert volunteers take drone pilot training. One has received his credentials. Having one of our cert volunteers able to fly a drone when we can utilize them allows me to get that drone in the air faster. Not that we've had to wait a long time with our partners, but to be honest, a deputy or a police officer, probably if I can use them to do police officer and deputy duties first and then I can have one of my volunteers fly that drone. I can't overstate the impact of having aerial drone footage so quickly at our disposal following our events. The flooding we had in June and the storm damage that we saw in July a week or so ago are examples of how important it is to have that resource fairly quickly and not only for damage assessment in the short run, but it allows us also to marry up the, for instance, our GIS department married the video with creating a GIS file and able to map, for long term, the inundation areas. That's going to be very helpful so when we have future events that are on the Morse Creek, we have a historical reference that we can go back to fairly easily to determine what areas may flood ahead of time. And maybe we can install some traffic measures or other measures that will reduce the amount of individuals that were driving in areas that became inundated with water and try to mitigate the effects of that event should we ever see it again. We do have, we've been working with the city IT department replacing computers and other equipment in the emergency operations center, about $10,000 worth of PCs that are end of life. As you know, we completed construction about six years ago and those PCs are at their end of life. And the IT department would like to rotate those out. Downstairs, we have a UPS uninterruptible power supply that provides battery backup power to the 9-in-1 and radio infrastructure downstairs. Those batteries need to be replaced every several years and so 2026 is our scheduled maintenance for that and that's about $12,000 for those batteries. Along with our radio project, the state of Nebraska asked if they would, if we wouldn't mind if they donated a tower to the effort. They have an 800 megahertz tower site that they are decommissioning and that equipment, they wanted to move to Hall County. And the Carroll Water Tower is an area that is near really one of my most difficult-to-cover radio areas. It's some distance from the county tower near Alda, near the Heartland Shooting Park. So being on the outskirts of the county and with the relatively hilly topography that the area northwest of Carroll provides, for the sheriff's office, that's a pretty challenging area to get radio coverage. So we identified this would be the best place for a third site at this time. And also, the water tower in Carroll hosts a site for that NREM network that I spoke of. That will allow us to connect directly to the statewide radio system using the NREM network without having to purchase additional connectivity areas if we co-locate those together. This shelter, it's not exactly, this is simply an example on the photo, but it'll house, it will house the statewide radio equipment donated by the state and maintained by the state to be operated here in Hall County. And I'm working with the NREM board to see if we can't co-locate their equipment that's in an outdoor weatherproof cabinet into this room. It'll co-locate everything together, make the connections a little easier. Since they're really very related pieces of equipment and they have a symbiotic relationship, we think it's wise to try to co-locate all of that equipment together. And that's all of my budget.
Excellent presentation, Mr. Rosenlund. Do council members have any questions? I guess not. Thank you for being here tonight. Now let's discuss a motion to approve our consent agenda items 7A and B, DEF, G through H, J, L, M, N, O, P. Pardon me, K. All right. We're holding back 7C, I, and K. And L. Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I move that we approve the consent agenda items 7A through P without C, I, K, or L.
And Mr. O'Neil.
I second that.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
First consent agenda item we take up is 7C, approving payment of claims for the period of July 9, 2025 through July 22, 2025 in the total amount of $21,239,574.90. Good evening, Mr. Brown.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you, council. So tonight, you'll notice that the scheduled bills is around $21 million, which is quite a bit higher than usual. So it doubled from the last time. So just a brief rundown of some of the projects and some of the payments that came out of this two weeks. So in our streets area, we had capital projects worth 1.6 million. The radio project that John just talked about, we made a payment of 1.8 million. We have the fire department with their redoing Fire Station Number 3. That payment was 441,000. They also got their ladder truck in. That was 2.3 million. Streets, they got their asphalt machine for 227,000. Solid Waste purchased a compactor for 834,000. And we made bond and interest payments for electric, water, and sewer. And these were our combined utility bonds that we did in 2020. So the total of that was 4.8 million. So that is roughly 12 million of the 21 million.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. And Mr. Nickerson, do you have a motion, please?
I make a motion we approve payment of claims for the period of July 9, 2025 through July 22, 2025 in the total amount of $21,239,574.90.
Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I'll second that.
Any discussion? So it looks like we had, Mr. Brown, it looks like we had a lot of high-priced stuff, but it's all a lot of things that city departments needed and have been waiting on.
Absolutely. Yes, it's summertime, it's construction time, and it's the equipment comes in time. So it's.
That new ladder truck, I think, is expected to last 25 years. So it's an investment for the future.
Yes, sir. Matter of fact, I made arrangements with Cory to bring the fire truck next on the 29th. So it'll be out here before the meeting so people can look at it.
Thank you.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
7I, approving continuation of sanitary sewer district number 546, portion of Roush and Cobal subdivisions. Mr. Kurtz, please tell us about this.
Yes, so as we presented probably about a month ago about the sewer district out on adjacent to Stolly Park Road, we reached out to property owners. We petitioned for, or they petitioned for a district. They had the opportunity to either protest it or to let it continue as planned. Throughout that period, we had three property owners protest, which is approximately 21% of the property owners protested the sewer district. As such, we are here to recommend moving forward with that district.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtz. Mr. Nickerson.
I make a motion we approve 2025-230.
Mr. O'Neil.
I second that we approve 2025-230.
Mr. Nickerson, discussion.
I just wanted to pull this just for a little bit of discussion, just to make sure everything was okay with it. It sounds like you say the majority of people have approved it. So the next step is what in this process when you're looking at something like this?
The next step would be to prepare the bid documents. There's a little debate right now, I guess. There is a potential for CDBG funding for this area. We're looking into that. In fact, that project will be brought before you next meeting.
How would that work? How would the CBDG money work on that?
Well, so if that portion was approved and if they prove, which this area is right on the threshold, so they're going to have to do a wage survey of this area. But there is potential that we could receive almost $200,000 to put towards this project, thereby even making it a lot better situation for the property owners in which the total that we show here, we're about 350,000 on our high-end estimate. We could almost cut that in half if all the pieces align. So even without that, the property owners approved to proceed with this. So again, it's never going to get any easier than what it is today. So we're going to keep moving forward. The design has been coordinated with the Stolly Park Road project that is currently under design so that everything works together. Whether we bid them together or separately is a little bit of a question right now, depending upon if the CDBG funding, there's some requirements that come with that that we'll have to comply with. So I don't want to subject the whole project to that if we don't have to. So we might end up bidding them separately. But nonetheless, either way, our plan would be to proceed with the project.
I see. And then for completion, are you looking at 12 to 18 months or is it longer than that? Or how's that work?
Well, and we're trying to coordinate all of this stuff with Fauna Park, State Fair, all of those events. Our hope was to actually bid it this fall, right after the State Fair start working. I don't think we're going to make that. So quite honestly, we're probably going to have to bid it such that they could start work after Fauna Park horse races next spring. We'll start, we'll get a window in there between the races and the fair and then we'll have to let the fair go and then we'll finish it, probably stretching into this goal '27.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you, Keith.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
7K, consideration of approving request from We Are One for permission to use city streets and state highway. Mr. Kurtz.
So as your memo outlines, we received a request to have a public event using city right-of-way. This particular event is proposing to use sidewalks, not any city streets, but they are proposing to cross the state highway. So every time we cross the state highway, we need council approval to send that to the state so that they can have their period to review that. Without council approval, that review would not occur. So we are recommending, based on all the information, everybody department-wise had to review this. There's no issues with it. So we're recommending to carry that forward to the state for them to review the permission to cross the state highway as this one outlines, crosswalks that are already present.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtz. Counsel, a motion is in order. Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I move that we approve 7K.
And Mr. Stelk. Mr. Nickerson, discussion.
Yes, I was wondering, do we have any representatives from that group that was going to speak tonight?
Right. I overlooked that. Let's get our speakers up here. Laura Gamboa.
Hello. Or hello, I don't know. So hello, my name is Laura Gamboa, Urrego, and I'm here to provide context and support for the upcoming We Are One March, for which the Grand Island Community Safety Planning Group submitted a permit for. This is a grassroots initiative led by local residents who care deeply about building unity in our community. This group is not affiliated with any formal organization. One way we are showing support for our immigrant and refugee neighbors is by organizing this march to celebrate the diverse cultural backgrounds that make up Grand Island and to affirm that our newcomer communities are seen, valued, and welcomed. As an immigrant myself, I felt the firsthand fear and negativity spreading online, sorry, spreading online, often targeting both documented and undocumented individuals. This march is our way to countering that darkness with light, offering hope, visibility, and solidarity intended for members in our community that want our newcomer population to feel welcome and supported. So the event is planned for Saturday, September 21st. The march will begin at Love Flores Parking Lot on Fourth Street, continue down to Second Mall to Second Street, head to City Hall for some brief remarks, and return via Walnut back to Fourth Street. Participants will walk on sidewalks and on private property with permission, and we will follow all pedestrian and safety rules. A banner with the march name will lead the way, and participants are encouraged to bring positive and welcoming signs. We will not allow any harmful messaging at all. And if you guys have any further questions about this, you are welcome to contact us at the email I provided at the submission.
Thank you. Please continue, Mr. Nickerson.
Yes, thank you, Laura, for presenting. I think a lot of us just looked at the We Are One group, and we're wondering, okay, who is this and what it's all about? So I appreciate you coming and sharing with us today. Have no problem with the route, none of that. Just was curious about the organization. It sounds like you're starting something new, and that's just fine to see our community come together as one, and it sounds like a good opportunity to make that happen. So thank you again for being here.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Seven L, approving bid award for Dodge parking lot sidewalk repairs, project number 2025-S1-1. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes, so we had some issues with sidewalk around the Dodge Street parking lot, right across the street here. The quantity of the repairs required that we solicit bids for this repair, so we did just that. So this is for the approval of that contract to fix the sidewalks around the Dodge Street parking lot.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Move we approve 2025-TAC-233.
Mr. Stell? Thank you, discussion. Mr. Stell?
Yes. My question was, I had somebody approach me, are, on this project, are you taking out any of the trees at the parking lot, the Dodge parking lot?
I believe there are a couple of trees that will be removed with this. They're heaving the sidewalk, so we need to take care of those and remove them.
I guess their concern was that we were going to take out all the trees, but you're only taking out those that are...
Only the ones that would be affected by the sidewalk needing repair.
Okay. That's my concern.
And I honestly don't know the exact number. I just, I do know that there are going to be a couple that would be impacted with the project.
Okay. That was my concern. So thank you.
Honestly, that's a concern on any of the downtown trees. It's not just this particular one. We deal with it all the time. It's kind of a give and a take. I understand trees are good. I like trees as much as the next guy. Jack's laughing. He's heard it before. Sometimes sidewalks and trees just don't meld, like, and so I'd rather find a place for a tree to grow for 30, 40, 50 years than have to rip them out after 15 because they're heaving the sidewalks. So it's kind of a thing, but it's, there's, like I said, it's a give and a take.
Thank you, sir.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Well, now I'll take up our public hearings, eight A, public hearing request from Fuji Steakhouse, Inc., DBA, Fuji Steakhouse, 1004 North Deers Avenue, Suite 200, Grand Island, Nebraska, for a Class C liquor license. Mrs. Grenier?
An application for a Class C liquor license was filed with the Liquor Control Commission and received by the city on June 30, 2025. A notice to the general public of date, time, and place of hearing was published on July 12, 2025. A notice to the applicant of date, time, and place of hearing was mailed on July 1, 2025, along with Chapter 4 City Code alcoholic beverages. Departmental reports were received as required by City Code, and recommendation is to approve. Public hearing is now open. Zach, did you want to speak?
Thank you, everybody. Zach Butts, just here to give a little bit of context for what we're doing at the request of my client. This is a part of a stock sale. So you might notice, oh, it appears to be the same corporate entity, and that's because it is. That corporate entity has a new shareholder. And when a corporate entity gets a new shareholder, the Liquor Commission requires that they obtain a new liquor license. And so that shareholder, Yen Yulyn, is with us tonight. And like I said, just to ask that I give a little bit of color to what's going on here. She has had the opportunity prior to the closing of the stock sale to work closely with the prior owner, work in the business, get familiar with it. Fortunately, there's a lot of continuity with front and back of house staff since she's taken over. It's been successful so far, operating under the temporary operating permit. And if you haven't been to Fuji before, there's not a better time to go try it. Thank you for your consideration on the liquor license, and I look forward to answering any questions you might have.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Mr. O'Neil?
I move that we approve 2025-238.
Mr. Hawsey?
I would second that motion.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Eight B, public hearing concerning a site-specific redevelopment plan for CRA Area Number 40 to allow for redevelopment of property located south of Old Potash Highway and west of US Highway 281 for commercial purposes. Anderson, Kia. Mr. Navaty?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The item before you this evening is an application for tax increment financing. Back in February of last year, you may remember that you approved the redevelopment area Number 40 that included the Anderson Kia property and the old Nebraska Machinery, not Nebraska Machinery, the construction rental property. I've been around too long. There's too many names in my head at this point. The, you approved that, when you approved that, I think I made it clear that it was likely that we would have a TIF application at some point. That application did come forward and was presented to the CRA at their June meeting. They forwarded it to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission did find that the proposed use of this property is consistent with the comprehensive plan. They're looking at rebuilding the Kia dealership there and knocking down the existing buildings, putting up new buildings, and really improving the look of that particular corner, where the city has put in a substantial amount of money redoing Old Potash Highway. The, and so Anderson Kia is looking at redoing that as well. You did approve a subdivision a month ago that facilitates this redevelopment, and Chief Construction has been working with Mike Anderson and Anderson on this. They are looking at spending upwards of $8.5 million on the new building. They are requesting $994,000 worth of TIF. That will be used to, for demolition, to cover the acquisition cost of the property, to cover site work, drainage, all of those things that are eligible activities within the area. Projected valuation of this project upon completion is really only about 4.8 million. So it, they're spending a lot more money on it than it is likely to be worth at the end. It could end up being worth more, which would mean that the TIF would pay off faster. With that, Planning Commission recommended approval. The CRA has approved this and sent it forward for council to approve it. If you approve this this evening, we will engage the attorney to draw up the contracts to take those to the CRA.
Public hearing is now open. Roger Bullington, would you like to speak?
Roger Bullington, 3935 West Gate Road, Grand Island, 68803. No, thanks for considering this. We've been working with Mike for probably about three years now, and kind of iterative process, going back and forth and, you know, cutting, adding things, but mostly cutting due to the high cost of construction and interest rates and potential tariffs and that stuff. It's really stressing the pro forma on this, and obviously, TIF would be needed to move forward. One of the things that is pretty evident on here is the assessed value, and that was an estimate given by Christie Wall, the Hall County Assessor. And I think we all know that once we build that building, that the assessed value is going to go up a lot higher than that, and he's going to have to pay more taxes. And like Chad alluded, it'll be a quicker TIF payout. So it'll get back on the tax rolls quicker than that 15 years. And I think that's pretty evident in most all new construction, especially all the stuff that's been built in the last year or two because of the exorbitant high cost. Chief Construction is glad to be the potential contractor on this, pretty much, I mean, all local subs, be it community project, and it's really going to beautify, you know, that South 281 corridor, you know, just north of the Highway 30, and improving that, the looks from that on-ramp onto the west lane of Highway 30 going west. So thank you for your consideration.
Mike Anderson, would you like to speak?
Yeah, I just want to thank you. Well, first of all, I was kind of sick to my stomach to hear the value of this. It'll only be worth half when we're done, but I do appreciate the opportunity to speak. And, you know, it is really, without this TIF funding, there is really no financial way that we could move this project forward. Just the construction costs have really, you know, grown substantially from when we first started this project, and working with Kia, trying to minimize the facility the best we can, or as far as, you know, keep it to, you know, to maximize, I guess, the space the best we can and keep the cost down the best we can. And I'm just amazed about how expensive construction is these days. And I just would ask for your approval with the TIF to help us with this project. So I really feel like it's going to really beautify that corner there, which is kind of, you know, right now, when you drive by that, it's kind of an eyesore. And, you know, really looking to kind of make that a nice area right there for people coming into Grand Island. So thank you for your time. Do you have any questions, I guess, for me, or is it...
They may have some after they make a motion. Thank you. Jay Vavertchik?
Thank you, Jill, and thank you, Mayor. It's a privilege to be here tonight in support of the recommendation before you. And it's good to see Mike here. Just a reminder, Mike Islander, went and played football, but nonetheless, he represents an extension of family that his dad, Roger, and Melody provided with an entrepreneurial spirit that we enjoy today. I've long been a promoter of redevelopment, as many of you know. And some may wonder, why are we doing redevelopment on Highway 281? Well, the special circumstances of this, and we've had other developments occur on 281, but with the old facility there that he acquired by virtue of the purchase of the real estate, it's good to see that that is now being leveraged into a multimillion-dollar project. And with redevelopment, of course, you get new jobs, increased tax bases. You also become an increased destination. So when you look at this investment, I think taxpayers are well-served. The other thing about redevelopment is the case that it spurs others to be also entrepreneurial, to think, how can I dream? How can I make a buck? And just so you know, being in business isn't just a lockstep slam dunk deal. When you look down to managing inventories and meeting the budget and payroll and all the different things, knowing that you're making a commitment here in Grand Island, I think, well serves all of us. So in this investment, indeed, I think the, all the steps have been undertaken correctly when you look at the CRA's examination, the Planning Commission now before you. But lastly, before I walk off here, seeing Mike here tells me one thing. He cares. He doesn't assume this is going to happen. It's not an entitlement. He's here showing that indeed, the investments that that company is making will be worthwhile for your consideration. And I think that means an awful lot. The last thing, seeing Roger here, if this is approved, it looks like we're going to have other jobs supported with a contractor that we all know of as well. And that breeds a good opportunity for the future as well. So with that, appreciate your consideration. Always appreciate your leadership and would ask for your strong consideration to approve this tax increment financing proposal. Thank you, Mayor Steele.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Your motion, counsel. Mr. O'Neil?
I move that we accept 2025-239.
Mr. Nickerson?
I second the motion.
Discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Eight C, public hearing on consideration of acquiring an ingress egress easement across lots four and five of Trinity Heights, Third Subdivision, 1941 and 1949 Trinity Street. Mr. Navaty?
The item before you this evening is actually to acquire a new easement. We are, later in the meeting, we'll be vacating an easement. They are moving property lines on this, on the property there just to the east of Blessed Sacrament Church. The Mezners will be getting started on developing the next phase. And as they're developing that next phase, they're shifting the property lines a little bit so that they can get some different buildings in there. While we had a, an easement that you'll be vacating, but they still want to maintain that connection between this residential development and the church, and we'll be putting a sidewalk in there. So we're just putting a new easement in. And they've agreed to accommodate that.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
A motion, counsel? Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I move we approve 2025-TAC-240.
Mr. Conley?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Eight D, public hearing on the one- and six-year street improvement plan. Mr. Kurtz, please tell us about this.
Yes, so we're at that time of year again in which we need to talk about our one- and six-year plan for transportation systems. So we'll go ahead. So we'll go ahead, kind of get started. Obviously, you guys have seen this in your packets. Here are a list of our twenty-twenty-five projects that we've been working on, and we'll kind of touch on some of these as we keep going here. Some of them are carryovers, obviously, because of the size of the projects and whatnot. Again, as your packet outlined, here's kind of the rundown of where we're forecasting versus our budget. There's a couple of projects that were not quite as far along as we had projected originally, partially due to weather, some unforeseen circumstances. Some of these actually got carried over from last year due to similar circumstances. So again, we're running a little under what we were budgeting. And this is our four-hundred fund as well. This one is a little further behind. Obviously, we'll talk about it later, but the wetland bank is a little further behind for permitting standpoint, as well as we had the placeholder in there for the street and fleet facility, of which nothing materializes here. So that's one of the bigger discrepancies on that. The Third Street drainage improvements, we're hoping to bid that out this fall. We didn't quite get there on that. And Platte Valley Industrial Park, which we'll touch on later, hasn't happened yet either. So again, this is kind of where we're projecting our twenty-twenty-five forecast to be in relation to what we budgeted. So here's kind of a rundown of the twenty-six projects. And we'll go into more detail as we proceed here. So one of the first projects talked about is our annual curb ramp project. Again, this is just something we, we're doing on an annual basis. It's going to take many years to get over the whole city, but essentially, we're rebuilding all the intersection sidewalks so they're ADA accessible. This, a little foreshadowing, this will be talked about on your CDBG project list as well coming forward in the future. They are proposing to use some of their funds to boost this project along a little bit, which we've done that in the past. So we'll let out, if that is approved, we would let out this project here, like we typically do, as well as a secondary CDBG project. Grade separation at Broadwell with the UP line. This one currently is continuing. This year, we hit survey and design have started. Obviously, we'll continue in that. We have environmental engineering going on as well concurrently with that. Construction is anticipated for twenty-twenty-eight at this point. Again, thirty-four million dollar project, city share should be around six million dollars is what we're projecting at this point. Now, inflation and everything else could affect that, but this will be an eighty-twenty match with the state. So it's a huge project, something that has been long needed in Grand Island, so we're excited to keep that going. Locust Street, currently under construction. This was one of them that we were a little further behind than what we anticipated. We had some water main issues that were unforeseen. We try to investigate as much as we can, but once we dig into things, literally, who, we found some things that the utilities department wanted to fix while we were in there. So this one's lagging a little bit behind, as well as the rain has obviously impacted that. But this will continue that project along. We're anticipating Foner Park and South Locust to be open tomorrow, I hope. So for the State Fair, that'll be at least a T-intersection, if not, a section of the roadway might be open beyond that to the north coming soon. Here's kind of an overview of the, the project boundaries. Obviously, over the winter, we'll shut down. There will be no detours over the winter, so traffic can flow freely. In the next spring, we'll close it back down again and, and continue on. Locust Street, this is south by the Walmart. We left this in as a placeholder. It's looking now like we're probably going to get to close this project out this year, but I wanted to carry a, a little bit of funds into next year in case we needed it. The bridge is nearing completion. Obviously, the turn lanes and the highway portion of it are done, or were done last year, so this one turned out to be a good project, improve that area down there as well. Independence, again, this is one that's under construction. It'll carry into next fiscal year. We won't quite get it completed this fall, but progress is being made. Again, we were ahead of schedule until the rain started, so we're a little behind, but, but pretty close. The Manchester Independence Intersection should be open by school, so that will help a lot of the issues out there. Here's kind of an overview of that project. Stur Road, northbound dual lefts. Again, this is kind of a placeholder. We're waiting on signal poles. Supply issues, that seems to be a bottleneck that, that we're experiencing on this and South Locust currently, so this money is just to carry into next year to, to cover some of that final expense. I anticipate the road itself to be open to traffic within the next couple of weeks.
What, what supplies in particular are a problem?
The, the signal pole mast arm, we had to replace one of those to be a longer pole. We had to move it back further from the intersection, so that one pole is holding the whole thing up. The lead time on it are getting a lot further than what we anticipated. Again, South Locust, same thing. Foner Park Road, that intersection will open up for, tomorrow, I'm hopeful, but the signal poles that we need to finish that intersection are on their way. So it will open with the old poles functioning, not the way they should be, but they will direct traffic in the near term. So that's what's holding this thing up. Again, this was a partnership with JBS. JBS did work with us. They are, they are paying for a portion of this project, so it's, it's a good win-win situation for the city and JBS as well to help traffic around shift changes. State Street, median improvements, this is part of the Claude Road expansion. Ultimately, that project was a precursor into dealing with the traffic issues. We have a Deers, Deers and State, Deers and Thirteenth, Deers and Fadeley. We are in design. We're getting to the point where we're going to start reaching out to, to property owners and talk through some of these things. What we're showing here is a, is a concept. Some of these things have changed slightly. We're getting rid of, more than likely, the, the medians on the side street. The access control will more than likely stay the same as what we are showing on State. Again, this will help traffic to, to free through, free flow through that intersection. Stolly Park Road, this is from, essentially, it's turning to be Locust to Stur Road. Originally, we were, we were looking at the State Fair property as kind of a boundary. As we investigated this and looked into some drainage issues, right-of-way issues, all of those kind of things, pedestrian, traffic. We're going to end up probably removing a little further west than what we anticipated, but design is moving good on this. We're getting to the point, we've, we've worked with the State Fair and Foner Park to coordinate some issues. We're getting to the point where we're going to start reaching out to some property owners and coordinate some of those issues with them. We're hopeful, again, as I mentioned before, to bid this out this fall and start construction potentially after the races next year. We'll, we'll have a window in there between, between the horse races and the fair, and then we'll finish the project beyond that. So more than likely, this'll lag into twenty-seven as well, but we're showing what we feel is the, the portion of the expense that will fall into, to next year at this time. BN, this is a Broadwell crossing study. Well, Broadwell's a portion of this, I should take a step back. So Burlington Northern reached out to the city to conduct a planning study through town. So we are looking at, with this study, seventeen crossings with the BN, pretty much the MPO boundary. So it's not just city limits. We're looking at all the way out to Seventeenth Road, all the way out on the east side of town to Gun Barrel. Again, some of those crossings are outside city limits, but they are within the MPO They proposed that they would help us with a grant application in which Burlington Northern would, would pitch in some funds, and if we were successful, the Fed's, FRA would pitch in eighty percent. We were selected for this, so we're working through the details. Right now, it is looking like NDOT will administer this project for us. They are actually doing a very similar project for state highway crossings with the BN line. So they offered to help us with this. We're not familiar with the FRA fund process, but it made sense. They're doing the same kind of project. They're going to have the same project issues. So efficiency-wise, this is a great thing for the city.
And for me and others, say what FRA means.
Federal Rail Administration.
Thank you.
So what we're showing is our share of the, of the fund, of the project. So it's a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar project. Feds will pay for eighty, city ten, BN offered to pay for ten. The big thing about this one to focus on is, at Broadwell, they are proposing to do a, a more detailed study, similar to what we did on UP at Broadwell. This will line us up for applications for either state or federal funds for a grade separation at that crossing as well. The city put in, we spent between three-hundred and four-hundred, three-hundred-and-fifty to four-hundred thousand dollars at Broadwell to get that study so that we could get the funding for that project. This year, at the end of the day, I hope to spend seventy-five thousand dollars. The city has all the, the information to move forward with an application for that one as well. So these are not, these are not sprints. These are, these are very patient projects, so it's, it's just part of it. So it is a huge benefit for the city to participate in this project. So Thirteen, Thirteenth Street median improvements, again, this is similar to State. This is, so in the State project, we're, we're proposing funding for construction. Thirteenth Street here, we're proposing design so that we can propose construction the following year. So we're stair-stepping all of these things to make them all work together, but essentially, similar kind of idea at Thirteenth that we're looking at, at State. We're just starting to get design going, or proposing to get design going this budget year so that we can move forward with the project in the future. Two-Eighty-One intersection improvements, this is another thing that is a huge win for the city. So with the Claude Road, with the Deers Avenue, we also looked at the, the state highway. We did traffic studies on all of this area. We looked at accident rates. We looked at traffic issues, all of those type of things. What came to the top on Two-Eighty-One was the need for some improvements that we feel will help with safety issues along there. So we proposed to the state, they have a safety committee in which they do safety projects. One of the big ones that they're working on now, if you guys have been to Lincoln or Omaha, they're building with safety funds, they're building the cable median barriers on the interstate. That is a safety project. We proposed a safety project on Two-Eighty-One. So we're looking at offsetting left turn lanes. So instead of sitting head-to-head and not being able to see beyond the car in front of you, we're proposing to offset those so you can see beyond the, the opposing traffic as well as some right turn lanes on intersections that don't currently have them. So we, again, analyzed all the accidents. We did a cost analysis, cost-benefit ratios. It was a very positive ratio on that. The state selected this for funding. We requested about four and a half million dollars. They selected this project. So with what we're showing here, this would be the first step in design. So again, we're, it's a cost share with the state. So again, it's going to be a, it's going to be a marathon and not a sprint. So this is the first step. Again, you can kind of see twenty-twenty-nine is probably when we would anticipate building this, but we're impacting the State Street, Thirteenth, Fadeley, Old Potash, the, the Highway Thirty ramps, and Stolly Park Road with this project. So there's a lot of good benefits for this, good bang for the buck on that as well, teaming with the state. Here's kind of some pictures. Web and Thirteenth, the signal there is essentially rusting off at, at the connection points, so we need to replace the signal. So we're, we're proposing a full signal replacement. This would include the signal controller as well. Sycamore, next year, we're proposing design of this project. This would focus on Tenth to Capitol. If you all have drove on this recently, the pavement's in pretty rough shape. The center section of the road is, is sagging, a lot of faulting, cracking along this corridor. So we're proposing to start design on this. We're hopeful that we can use a similar solution that we did on Custer, whereby we essentially replaced the driving lanes, believe the curb and sidewalk and all of those intact. It speeds up construction. It's a lot more cost-effective, a lot less temporary easements, and all of those kind of things. That is our goal. We'll have to vet that out and, and see if that's feasible or not. Kind of depend upon survey of the curb lines and how it trains and whatnot. The wetland bank, again, this was one that we had proposed this year. We hadn't got as far as we would have liked. The permitting has to go through the Corps of Engineers, so that took a little longer than anticipated, but again, we're planning on continuing the engineering and hopefully bidding this out. I'd like to get this started this winter, if we have a mild winter. Again, this would provide us with a wetland bank to offset federally funded wetland issues as well as we have the potential to sell those to other entities. Sidewalk share program, again, this is for homeowners. This was created years ago to help fix code violations on sidewalks. It's been very successful. Again, people are, people are excited to use these funds if they need to make these changes or fixes to their sidewalks. The industrial park drainage, again, as kind of mentioned earlier, the partnership with the EDC, the NRD. This was proposed as a drainage district back in twenty-nineteen it was created. Obviously, costs have gotten a little higher since then, as well as we've, we've looked at making some off-site improvements as well with the project, which makes sense to do at the same time. So what we're showing here is the total city portion of the project. I approximate a hundred and ninety thousand dollars that that would be recovered by that drainage district which was created with the city. which was created with the city funding the remainder of that. Stormwater modeling, obviously, this has kind of been a hot topic, obviously, recently. We've done a couple pilot projects of this. This is kind of a placeholder, kind of a continuation of what we've done. We modeled some areas of town, as you can see kind of in this picture here, that don't drain as fast as as one would like. Sometimes the answer is there's not much we can do other than complete rebuilds, which were probably cost prohibitive. Sometimes we figure out that what we're doing is good. We used some of this on the Locust Street model. We modeled that whole corridor to make sure that we designed the drainage properly in that area for that project. We've looked at a couple different areas, as you can see below. So I don't have a particular area that we're looking at right now. But again, this is something that we'd like to continue with if one of those areas should provide itself. Third Street Drainage. This was an area between Eddie and let's call it Cedar that we kind of identified as not having the best drainage. A lot of areas downtown are pretty flat as far as their curbs go. So we looked at the potential of adding some inlets and some pipes in this area. Again, this project was derived from the modeling effort. We kind of identified this as an area. We're doing the the actual design of this project in-house. We're hopeful to bid this out this fall yet. We'll get it done next spring. And then we'll hopefully follow that up with asphalt overlay over that roadway the following year. It'll look like a brand new road. Nobody will ever know that we put storm sewer in there as well as, obviously, we will improve the drainage in that region as well. Again, this is a carryover from last year. We're going to leave or we're proposing to leave it in with your approval. A placeholder for any land opportunities that might present themselves for a future street and fleet facility. As you guys know, we, we acquired or you voted to approve the acquisition of the Heartland Ag Building. That was also kind of considered for a street location as well. We were hoping to acquire some more land in that area. It didn't work out, but this gives us the flexibility should something come up that we feel like would be a good fit for for a future possibility on on that facility. Capital Outfall. I don't have a picture of this, but this is something that's been on our radar as well. So we're proposing a $200,000 project. There are very large corrugated metal pipes on the outfall ditch that runs north and east out of town. They're starting to rust out on the bottom. These are eighty-four inch culverts. We all could walk through them. But with the bottoms rusted out, obviously, we want to make sure that our drainage works as good as it could or should. And so we feel like we need to start taking some of these as we can afford them and fixing those those culverts. We haven't decided whether we go back with concrete or we look at some other alternatives. But we know that we have several to deal with. So more than likely be an ongoing expense for a couple of years until we can get them all cured. So we're, we're proposing this to to start addressing that that project. The South Oaks Trail. This was requested by administration. We've started design. We, we have thirty percent design currently. Council approved moving forward with final design several, maybe a month-ish ago. But this would be a ten-foot trail that would extend from the diversion south of Walmart. And it would run south to Camp Augustine entrance or proposing a trailhead there. And then any future trail into Mormon Island would be at a later date. So this would be for the construction of that project. Again, this is kind of an overview of what we're proposing for the following year. Here would be the four hundred fund. Total project, proposed projects here. This is kind of outlining our, our funding for the two-ten projects. Working through the cash balance at the end of the year. And this here is all the projects that are currently being proposed and how they would carry through the future as well. So obviously, the bond payment here, that would be for the Old Potash project that we have completed a couple of years back. And then all of the rest of these I have touched on tonight.
Thank you.
Public hearing is now open. Jim Walker, would you like to speak on this item?
Give me for being nervous. I'm not used to speaking in this kind of proceeding. The reason I'm here, I own the land at eleven-eleven East Stolly Park Road. And I was hoping that I could gain some kind of information as far as what, if any, is being done as far as drainage at the intersection of Stewart Road and Stolly Park Road. When the right-hand turn lane was put in back between twenty-ten and twenty-eleven, a curb was placed along the south side of the eastbound lane, right-hand turn lane, and comes back to the west a block or so, and there's a turnout or a cutout in the curb. And all the runoff or a good share of the runoff from that intersection ends up on my property. And it wouldn't be a problem, except that every time I mow, my mower is stuck. And I end up having to take my four-wheel drive out there to pull my mower out. So I was hoping someone could tell me, like I say, what, if anything, is being done as far as consideration for draining on that intersection.
Mr. Kurtz, do you have any response? Do you need time to study this or?
So I don't have the actual design exhibit, but all of that is being looked at with the project. Again, we're to the point where we're starting to reach out to property owners. So you will be contacted. We'll bring you in. The State Fair is working on their ARPA project as well for their drainage. They proposed an outlet along there as well. So all of those things are being looked at. We'll definitely, again, reach out to you on that. That intersection itself will be modified with this project as well as the state fairs. So we're all trying to coordinate those. We just hadn't got to a point where we were ready to reach out to folks yet because we didn't want to be premature in that. But we'll definitely.
I just wanted, wanted someone to be aware of the problem.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I think we're aware of the drainage issues at that intersection. So we should be able to take those into consideration.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Mr. O'Neil.
I move that we accept twenty twenty-five dash two forty-one.
Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I'll second that.
Discussion. Mr. Brown.
Yeah, I agree with all your whole projects and everything, but the last one. I don't know if we should be spending six million dollars on a hike and bike trail right now to Camp Augustine. I think that's a little premature yet. That's my thoughts.
Mr. Nickerson.
This is a lot of stuff, isn't it? I'm impressed with the work that you and your team does on the magnitude of all of this. And I think, I have a question for you here in a little bit. I'm not even going to give you a chance to think about it yet. But I, just all the magnitude of everything going on, I am going to give you a hint. I want to know what helps you feel a sense of accomplishment when you see these projects and those. Don't answer it now. I want you to have time to think about it. One of the things that you said when you were going through your slides that caught my attention and I hope that there's an alternative, you talked about the medians on deers going away. Does that mean that we are not going to try to control traffic from going into Pompers? Or do you have an alternate plan besides a median that would be going up there?
The display. So when I say deers, medians, the ones on State Street more than likely are going to look similar to what this concept shows. The medians on deers really don't serve much purpose when we control the traffic on State or Thirteenth or Fadeley. Primarily, one of the reasons why this works the way it works today is the signal turned green and there's not enough room for everybody to get to where they want to go. When we take the signal away, there won't be that delay. So people will be able to continuously move. The other thing is you won't be able to turn left off of deers anymore.
And why is that?
So I have a left turn bay available to turn into Pompers with this project because I can't turn left off of deers onto State anymore. Does that make sense?
I'm confused. I'm still confused. So, so my question is, as you know, the problem that we face is, so you're going to redesign this. Lights go away. There's no traffic signal. But people still coming off State turn right to go into Menards, but then somebody decided they want to go to Pompers. Are they still going to be able to turn into Pompers there? Or is there going to be some kind of restriction that keeps them from getting in there?
Yes. And the reason why this jams up, part, part of the reason why, I should say, is because if I have somebody that wants to turn into Pompers today and we all know that this left turn lane is always backed up, right? There's always cars in it, no matter what, almost all the time there are cars parked there. You won't be able to take a left off of deers onto State anymore with the median along State. So now we can utilize that turn lane for the individual that wants to turn into Pompers. They can get out of the traffic, sit there and wait for their gap that they can't do today because it's always jammed full of cars trying to turn onto State. Does that make sense? Kind of?
No, but as long as you've got it figured out. I mean, I'm still trying to mentally see how it all works in my head. I see where the lights go away, so it's like a roundabout, but not a roundabout. Traffic keeps moving.
It's like everybody said, you know, when you put a roundabout, like at Wilmar by Hy-Vee. We all remember, I think most of us remember how cars used to stack up all, all the time there. That'll never work. It's going to be a disaster. The roundabout lets people just keep going. Now, if you're, obviously, you need to yield to whoever's in the roundabout and all of those kind of things. But for the most part, you're, you're moving, right? This will be a similar situation to that. I can assure you, as nerdy engineers go, we've debated all of these things and talked about them and sorted through them all. If we're going to fix it, this is about as good as we're going to get. Now, this concept was done probably two, two and a half years ago. And since then, these medians on either side on, on deers really aren't needed. So we're going to utilize those for the left turners into Pompers or the left turner into Wendy's because we aren't going to have any left turners onto State using them.
I'm just going to have to trust your engineering prowess because I think I get it.
It's a change.
But I'd have to almost see a model to see how it works because my brain doesn't work like everybody else's. But as long as we keep cars from stacking up, as you know, and that's, I see it happen and I've also seen it happen at Tractor Supply. It's, it's, you've got a little more room for cars to wait in the queue, but it still happens. And I don't know that that's on the radar and it may crop up as another issue down the road. But just so we're aware, I mean, I, as long as you've got it covered, and I know you do, it's just different.
So again, Thirteenth will be a very similar configuration. Again, this is an old concept. I don't, I didn't have the, the most up-to-date pretty picture on, on what we're planning. But the concept will be tweaked from what we're showing here in that these little medians on the side street won't be as critical to the operation.
Okay, sounds good. And just a quick question too, Sycamore, you don't have to bring up the slide, but I'm assuming that's going to be concrete because you just like everything else that's been on those big projects.
We've talked about whether we should try to mill it and asphalt and all the things. But the road, again, if you guys drove it and you paid attention to what I'm kind of talking about, you will see it. Center of the road has fallen. And unless we fix the subgrade below it, it's just going to do the same thing over and over again. So much like Custer, if we want to fix it, we, we really need to fix the problem. That's actually below, it's not just the concrete, it's what's below the concrete.
Sure, very good. You touched on stormwater modeling and I was going to ask John this question, but it's just as appropriate here. After an event like we had with the six to seven inches of rain and we saw the low spots and we saw how the drainage system's working, do we as a group, and I say as a group, that would be you and John and the mayor and Laura and whoever all the beings are that are involved, do we ever sit down and have a huddle and say, okay, here's what we've learned from this last event? And then do we create kind of an action plan from that? Or I think I know the answer. I think it should happen. I don't know how it happens. But I would certainly think that what we don't do is go through an event like that, let everything drain and say, oh, great, let's hope that doesn't happen for another twenty years.
Well, it will in another two hundred years. I can almost guarantee it.
Well, it's happened in twenty years because I was, I was in both.
I know, I'm being a little facetious in that statement. I mean, statistically, that event that we had will happen every two hundred years. Now, whether it happens in the next forty years or the next two hundred years, I, I don't know. And I agree with you, twenty, twenty or oh-five was a, twenty years ago was a similar situation, very close. G I U D helped us, PD helped us, they flew, they flew the, the footage for us. So between John, Roseland and our GIS folks and utilities and public works, we've looked at the footage, we've made maps, we've, we've looked at all of those kind of things. Now, have we huddled about what we can do about it per se in this particular thing? Maybe not directly, but I feel like indirectly we've talked a lot. There's only so many things you could do for that kind of thing though, too. Just so much water, so fast. Overall, I think everything performed very well. Obviously, there is some damage that occurred and we've all read and heard about that and it's unfortunate. You know, we're always looking at things that we can fix or, you know, do we need to go look at storm sewer or make sure things are clean? Yes, but some of those things are just, the scale of it was just so big, so.
I want to add that, so those informal communications have been going on. John has been continuing to work on the flood assessment, the damage assessment. He and Ed Klimick, our chief building official, took representatives from the Small Business Administration on a damage tour. They actually went to businesses and residences that were damaged and assessed those and have taken that back and are prepared to make a recommendation. So we're waiting for that formal recommendation. The next step would be that the, the governor would request relief essentially from the small businesses. The next step would be that the governor would request relief essentially from the Small Business Administration that would provide some type of funding relief, either low interest loans, low to zero interest loans, grants, programs like that. So we've, we're continuing to work on that damage assessment side. But all in all, the reports that I've gotten as city administrator from the department heads is that the improvements that the city made after the, after 2005 performed exactly as designed and as anticipated, matter of fact, better than anticipated. I think I've shared with you before that the anticipation was that it would take about 96 hours for Northwest Grand Island to drain and it drained within 24 hours. So it worked better than anticipated. So they've been doing that type of checking. And we will have John, once he has final answer from Small Business Administration, coming to the city council to provide kind of a final overview of, of the city's response and the damages that were incurred. But I think it's important to know that the communications between Public Works, Utilities, Emergency Management, Police, Fire, those go on 24/7/365. So they are always evaluating what is, what is going on in the city, what could go on in the city, working on these detailed public works improvements projects in advance and planning to prevent, planning to prevent as much damage as they can. So they engage in those conversations all the time, which is a larger part of the reason why it's an informal process because they are always communicating.
Well, I would concur that the 2025 flood receded much faster than 2005. And I remember that day watching my landscape timbers float down West Ninth Street and I don't know where they ever ended up. Somebody got them. But yeah, detention cells are maintained far better than they were 20 years ago. I see the improvements that you and, and not you, but the crew does out there even putting, it looks like what I call Cur's Lake there at State and Webb. Concrete, looks like they put some concrete down there maybe just to keep growth from getting in there and inhibiting any water flows. I mean, these are constant improvements. And I remember the nightmare of Northwest 20 years ago. I, you know, all that stuff, we've learned a lot. But I always wonder, but when we have another significant event like this, what the process was. It's, obviously I know things are happening. I just didn't know if there was a formal process. It sounds like yes and no. Things are just very fluid as you, as you look at opportunities. So that's great. So my only other question again was the one I asked you, I haven't had a lot of time to think about it. But what gives you a sense of accomplishment in your position when you see these projects come together? What, how do you feel about all that?
Well, you just said things worked better than they did. And the city worked with other agencies as well. The NRD has done a huge amount of work. That, that flood control project on the north side of town in Prairie Silvermore, I think that's one of the reasons why 2025 was not as bad as 2005 in that part of town. It probably helped things drain out a little faster out of town because it held some of the water out of town. The same could be said about the diversion on the south side, although I don't think it played maybe as big a role this time as it did in past experiences. Obviously, this is a marathon, not a sprint. And I guess through either what we just talked about as far as the future, but there's a game plan. There's, there's a roadmap, pun intended, I suppose. But that, that pushes us along to see the progress, to see the growth. I mean, there's a lot of things happening on the west side of town, not even on the west side of town. I mean, the, this Locust Street project that we're working on, I mean, that's going to be a huge thing. It's going to, it's going to make things look better. People drive down there to get to all the new things on that side of town. It's going to improve the drainage along that corridor. It's all the little things that add up that show that we're making progress. But it's, it's a slow thing. These things don't happen overnight. You have to kind of plan for them. And I, I would like to, you know, think that the plan is part of it, not just building stuff, you know? So the future is, is a part of it.
When I drive down Capitol, Custer, Claude, Old Pottish at Hy-Vee, and I look at all these new concrete roads with curb and gutter and I drive down those things, I just feel a sense of gratitude when I look at how this has come together. We talk about the projects, even my little pet peeve on Deers that's still coming together and will be done here relatively soon. But it, it makes me feel good as a person driving on these roads. And I just have to think that as a public works director and those that helped make this successful have to feel that same pride where a lot of communities don't have this, have this kind of success. And I just think it's a good thing to see these happen and this is a huge list and of course we keep chipping away, as you said. But just to see those accomplishments and good concrete roads with curb and gutter, it just, it says a lot for Grand Island. And you helping lead that says a lot about it as well. So thank you for that.
Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. Really excited about a lot in this plan. This area you were just talking about with Mitch, I get what you're saying on the, the left turn hand lane. So I'm not an engineer. I did figure it out. We'll talk later, Mitch. I'll draw it and I think I understand it. One of the things that I guess I'm a little concerned about on this is, is going to be the access to some of those businesses that are on those corners. And also, there's not a lot of access outside of these roads to get over to Claude. Though, are we anticipating more traffic there on the little road next to Carlos O'Kelly's?
Yeah, so, and I don't, I apologize, I don't have the big picture map showing it all. But those roads, like the one by, which is 18th Street by Carlos O'Kelly's, we connected the road down by Woodhouse Toyota now Honda. That used to just curve around. Now it goes all the way over to Claude. Some of those connections, those are critical into making all this work. So yes, you are going to have to plan a little bit more about where you want to go. But in all reality, you still have a good way to get there. You're going to use Claude Road and the roundabout to make a safe U-turn is what's going to facilitate all of this stuff. And again, I think we talked about this last year. The state's doing this on busy highway intersections, like they aren't crossing at the highway. They're doing a similar type of concept. They call it an R-cut, but they're, they're turning traffic away from the intersection. Somewhat like a roundabout. They actually U-turn kind of, it's, it's a unique situation. But it's going to be allowed, but it's going to be a little different than what it is today. It's just going to take a relearning, I guess. We haven't yet, our, our, our plan is, and I should, the state one will happen sooner. Our plan is to start reaching out to the property owners on the corners. And we'll probably have some sort of a public open house of some nature. Again, it, it comes down to, and I think I said the same thing last year. If we want to make it better, we're going to just have to do it. Like either we live.
It's going to hurt for somebody, but it's going to be safer, it's going to be better.
And it's going to be a process. I, I still feel that once people learn how to use it, it won't be that bad. Now, I'm not going to say that it's going to be perfect from day one because I don't, I don't think that's true. But I do think that once people get used to this, it will work. It's just a process. Something so simple as your Apple phone telling you how to do it, which I believe it will, after it gets into the thing, it will be fine. It's just a process. So like I said, either we do it or we don't, but if we don't, it's only going to get worse. It's just going to be different.
I think it's going to be a success. It's just going to be walking through with those business owners, trying to figure out the best communication and getting Apple and Google to figure that out faster rather than later.
Yeah.
Another question I had was over on the, that's great news about the, I don't remember the acronym you told us about Broadwell and the tracks. But our portion of that, yeah, that one, is that something that would be?
Burlington or the one at UP?
Yes, that one.
We're working on two, Broadwell. But again, this is the marathon. This is to Mitch's point. This is the planning. If we aren't getting in line for this stuff, even though I can't go home and say, hey, man, we built a great separation. Maybe at the end of my career, I could say, hey, I built a great separation, but we got in line for another one. You know, that's the kind of, but it doesn't happen overnight. Sorry to cut you off.
When it, when it does happen, but even this that we're looking at in the next few years, I know it's relatively small number of 75,000, but is that something that is Good Life eligible?
So I'll let Laura probably speak to this. But this 75,000, just to keep, like, this is just the study.
Right. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I got you.
And then, then we would be looking at more of the project back here where we're actually talking about building it. Which I'm proposing that we spend $200,000 next year. But our total project cost on this is projected to be about $6 million over the life of it for the city. But $6 million for a $34 million project, like.
Oh, it's a good deal.
It's a huge deal.
Yeah, that's great.
So I, I just, $75,000, you're like, wow, that's great, but that only gets us.
Oh, I'm with you. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I didn't expect that to be the price. We already buy it.
And that 75,000 is countywide. It is not limited to the Good Life District.
Oh, it's not just that one?
No, it is, it is all.
All 17 of the crossings are included in that. But the benefit of it is we get that study that we need for that next step at Broadwell, which would probably be our, is going to be our next great separation, hopefully after the one at UP. That's a pretty good deal considering we spent, I think it was around 350 to 400 to get to that point of our own dollars at Broadwell, at UP. So that's a good bang for your buck. We're going to look at all those, those crossings. So there could be some other projects that come out of that, too. I'm just most excited about the one at Broadwell, just to get over the tracks. Both cars and pedestrians, which is a big thing when you talk about the park north of the tracks, too.
So when it gets to that point, that one theoretically is eligible for Good Life District funds because it's within the district and it would address transportation for the project itself. So it was part of the original discussion with the applicant. So possibly?
Well, great plan. It's a lot of work. It's appreciated.
Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. So Keith, I'm grateful for all of the things that you brought in front of us because what we need as a council is we need you to bring all these projects that need to be done. Now, where do we get all the money? That's a different conversation between the council and finance, you know? So can you bring up the FY26 general fund costing, where you had a dozen projects on an Excel sheet? The next one, that's the gas tax. So the gas tax, well, that's fine.
This one?
No, it was the last one. Well, this is to the point. It's the $10,950 funded by the general fund. So if the sales tax is included in the $16 million group, my question comes to the general fund. Do we have $10 million for FY26? And if I look at those projects, the one that sticks out, and it's the one that Doug talked about, is when do you think that South Locust Trail would actually be constructed? Do you think you could design it, construct it all in FY26? Or do you think it'll bleed over into another year?
So I was asked to start final design on that project. It went to council, like I mentioned, it's probably been a month ago. I don't remember the exact date, quite honestly, for that design amendment. So we, we met on it today actually to talk about where they're at. We had already completed 30% conceptual design. A grant was applied for, for that project. We were not selected. So again, admin came to me and said, we want to build this project next year. I said, okay, if we were going to do it next year, we need to get going on design. So that's when we started the, the design amendment on that project. I will have to defer to Pat or Laura on the funding aspect of that project. I was just asked to deliver the project.
You think it could get built in 26?
I do, I do. Again, our, based on what we heard today and probably the wild card on this one is going to be right away. There's a little bit of easements that we're going to need. We don't need necessarily right away. We need easements. But still, that's a process. But pending all that, I do believe we could deliver that project by next year, yes.
Well, FY26 starts in nine weeks. So it's one of those, it actually starts in October, but.
So we're already, I'm, I'm just saying, we're already working on it. I hoped to bid it out this winter. If this is approved, it will be bid this winter and we'll, we'll turn ground next spring.
Then my next question is probably to Pat. If we have $10 million in the budget for the, for the general funding and the sales tax was included up with the gas tax and the other $16 million group, is there any sales tax left for this $10 million group?
So honestly, this $10 million is funded by 2004 and 2018 sales tax. The $6 million, that is part of a topic for council to consider for financing. Because we talked about moving the reserves that the general fund has currently over to capital improvement and then borrowing those, borrowing funds depending on council decision and make that payment out of those capital improvement. So we can knock off quite a few projects if we do that.
Yeah. So I mean, I think that we're in a great position today with our reserves. My concerns are, and I've listened to this for 18 years in a row, this list that Keith brings forward and others, it never ends. You know, and I'm grateful because that's what I need Keith to do is to tell us what needs to be done. And we need to kind of work out the money side of it. I just don't want to see all the reserves go away, you know, right away. But also just do it in a very methodical, very thought-out process and, and there's just a lot of numbers here. You know, and that's where I just want to make sure that, when will our next conversation be regarding capital in the budget beyond the one and six year tonight? Will we have another opportunity to talk about these projects?
Yes. We're actually going to talk about three of the big parks projects and the financing on those. So that could, this could all be included in that. But to your point, I want to be methodical about it. I don't want to overextend. I don't want to use a lot of our cash. So it's just getting the right mix.
Thank you, Pat, and thank you, Keith. I think you did a great job tonight presenting it all for our intake, even though we don't understand how, how we get back to Walmart.
Thank you, Keith.
Trust to Google.
I do want to speak of something somewhat about the hike bike trail to Mormon Island. I became concerned that maybe people thought this was something that just, that I invented. It's not something that I invented. When I was elected during my first term to be mayor, I met with the then public works director, John Collins, and Todd McCoy and Chad Nabody. And I said, what remains to be done on our hike bike trail plan? And they said, we need to complete the hike bike trail to Mormon Island. And that was long before the city even had an idea that we could combine Camp Augustine with Mormon Island. with Mormon Island. So, I started working on this six years ago. To give the people at home some context, this goes back almost 30 years. In 1992, there was an interlocal agreement with the Nebraska Department of Transportation, Hall County and the City of Grand Island, which outlined the overall project, including Interstate 80, South Locust Street interchange and four lane improvements from I-80 to Highway 34, 1992. 1997, a bridge plan in hand meeting was held for the South Locust Street, I-80 North to the Wood River diversion. The bike trail was discussed in the meeting minutes. That's 1997. 2001, the five lane South Locust Street roadway and bridge construction was completed from Highway 34 South to over the Wood River diversion. And in 2001 also, construction was completed for bridge widening of the two Platte River bridges, which included widening for the future bike trail. That's 2001. 2004, construction was completed to widen the southbound lanes of South Locust Street from I-80 North to the Wood River diversion. The future trail, the future trail to Mormon Island was shown on project plans along Locust South to the river. And in 2004, construction was completed for Interstate 80, South Locust Street interchange. So, these, this topic goes back 30 years. I found a resolution signed by Mayor Vavrecheck, September 13, 2011, seeking some grant funds for the trail. I don't know what happened with that. But this resolution signed by Mayor Vavrecheck in 2011 says, whereas it is the intention of the Public Works Department, Parks and Recreation Department, and Community Development to construct a hike bike trail from the Riverway Trail along South Locust, South Locust, across two channels of the Platte River and west into Mormon Island State Park. That, again, is September 11, September 13, 2011, in a resolution. Then, as recently as April 29, 2025, this year, we had a presentation about the Parks and Recreation Master Plan presented by Brian Trustee and Caitlin Boltie from Confluence. And they said, according to their survey of the people of Grand Island, that hiking, biking, and walking trails are a priority for the community, that the people of Grand Island want improvement on the number of trails the city has, and that the people promoted the trail to Camp Augustine as a way to escape to a natural area. That has been the appeal of the trail to Camp Augustine for me, is the ability to escape to a natural area. You know, we can make, we can build pickleball courts and, and we can build skateboard, skateboard parks, and those are all very nice, but I believe people crave the ability to get into a natural area by means of something other, other than a car. And the Confluence Master Plan that we heard about April, on April 29, 2025, said the same thing. So, I wanted to speak about the hike bike trail, so people understand it's been on the agenda for this city for over 20 years. That means previous councils, previous mayors have discussed this, and I would just say, if it's taken us 20 years to get this far, I mean, how many more years do we need to get something done? I would hope that we don't have to tell the people of Grand Island, we need two more decades to get accomplished what was planned to be accomplished more than 20 years ago. So, that's how the hike bike trail ended up in Mr. Kurtz's presentation tonight, where, and it's not just, it ended up there tonight, it's been part of the trail's master plan for years and years and years. I wanted to provide that context.
Public hearing on acquisition of public right of way and permanent easement for South Locust Street improvements, Foner Park Road to Second Street, project number 2021-P-6, Auto One Inc., and AOI Holdings LLC. Mr. Kurtz.
Yes, this is another round of right of way and easement that we need to complete the South Locust Street project.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
A motion is in order, council members. Mr. O'Neil.
I move that we approve 2025-242.
Mr. Sheard.
Thank you, I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Resolution 9A, approving lease agreement with Hall County Airport Authority. Mr. Brown, please tell us about this.
Thank you, Mayor. So, before you is a new lease for the Jack Reba Golf Course. The current lease is ending April 30, 2026, and it was a 25-year lease. The one that we are discussing tonight is a 20-year lease, and it starts at $28,358.48. That's a 3% increase from our current lease, and there will be a annual 3% increase. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. A motion, council? Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to approve Resolution 2025-243.
Thank you, Mr. Hossi. Mr. Sheard.
Thank you, I'll second that.
Discussion, Mr. Sheard.
Yeah, we had a conversation about this, Pat. You and I briefly talked, and can you explain why we would do 20, why that was, that amount of years was, came, came to be?
The Hall County Airport Authority preferred the 20-year instead of a 25-year.
And I guess I kind of agree with that, because it just makes it hard, though, for the golf course to make some of those decisions. I know they might come to us and say, hey, why are we only doing 20 years? It seems to be probably prudent to, for the airport, for sure.
Yes.
To not go longer, and I understand that. But also knowing what that ground is built on, probably best for us to do it in 20 minute, 20-year increments, so that makes sense. But I know that question was asked, so thank you.
Mr. O'Neil.
I just wanted to state for public record, is I'm elected also to the Hall County Airport Authority, I'll be abstaining.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Mr. Nickerson.
As I started to read through this agreement, I got bogged down and got bored with it. So, I'm gonna just, gonna ask the quick question. We don't know what'll happen with golf course in five years, 10 years, if future councils decide that they don't want to mess with it. Do we, does a new owner, should a new owner come forward, does this agreement automatically become acquired by them as well? Or is it always going to be the city's lease at this point?
It will always be the city's lease. I mean, that would be a carry question, but.
The, so, the property will always, in this, be the Airport Authority's actual property. We will always rent it. Who we contract with won't change the terms of this lease.
Okay, so if somebody decided they wanted to buy the golf course, we would just, I mean, I'm just throwing this out. I don't know what would happen.
We couldn't sell it. The Airport Authority would have to approach us and deal with it at that time.
You're talking about the land or?
Yeah, the land itself. Yeah, we can't sell.
Understood. I'm talking about the course itself, or however that would work out, if the city ever decided to get out of the golf course business. I don't, I'm not advocating for that.
At, at that point, absent further action, we would be renting a field, then.
Okay. Just curious.
Mr. Brown.
Yes, Mayor. I'll be abstaining, abstaining on this because I'm on the Airport Authority Board.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
And then the mayor will have to do the deciding sixth vote.
I vote to approve the lease agreement with the Hall County Airport Authority.
Motion adopted.
9B, approving Venue Works Heartland Event Center's operations funding request. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Venue Works is requesting the $200,000 that is remaining on our contractual obligation to them for operating expenses. That'll be a total of $500,000 for fiscal year '25.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I think we have some speakers on this.
Jay, would you like to speak on this item? Jay?
Well, I wanted to be here and kind of hear an update on the event center's request, and as you know, going back several months ago, the management agreement was put in place for Venue Works. And I, and so, I'm here just to go ahead and ask, I guess, a few questions, but I understand that agreement began January 1. Is that correct, Laura? So, that's the first.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, it, it started October 1, I believe, was the, October 8, there was a transition period.
See, it was my understanding, there was like a 90-day period where they would have transitioned, but Foner Park would still have the management of it. So, none, nonetheless, but when they were put in place, then they've, they've sought $100,000 initially, and then a second installment for $200,000. So, where I'm going with this is under the ordinance, indeed, anyone in that capacity would have the ability to request those funds. So, my question is then, say, for example, in October 1, or December, or January 1, what was the balance that we had in the hotel lodging tax? Because it's my recollection, we're roughly grossing about $550,000 maybe dollars a year. So, where I'm going with that, if, if the operator's been there for six or nine months, and now we're approaching $500,000, what's the balance of that hotel lodging tax once this is dispersed?
We'd have to have Mr. Brown answer the current balance in the fund, but this is a request that would take them through the end of the fiscal year. So, they would, just like Foner Park, Foner Park actually received 100% of the hotel taxes in our contract and the proposed budget from Venue Works. They anticipated approximately $500,000 in subsidy from the city for operations, which is, was based on the historic performance and operations of Foner Park.
Okay, so, so do you anticipate, where I'm going with this, do you anticipate the need to disperse more subsidy between now and October 1, or now and?
No, this would be the maximum amount that they're allowed under the contract.
That was my other question, if there was indeed a maximum, because the way the ordinance said, I think really whatever is collected potentially during that tenure would actually be eligible for reimbursement.
Eligible for use on the Heartland Event Center.
Right.
So, we, there are definitely other costs that are associated with the Heartland Event Center. We're in the process of getting some significant emergency repairs. Council has authorized a temporary chiller rental because the, the chillers broke down, had catastrophic failure, and we've had to order and pay for the installation of temporary chillers so that the state fair concerts will have air conditioning.
Sure. Well, indeed, it's a new environment, because in the last 20 years, I appreciate Mayor Steele's leadership on hike and bike trail, and found interesting to hear reflections of the flood from 20 years ago to today, and Public Works is in no comparison today what it was in 2005. And the city's grown and adapted, much like the event center, and with the additional investment that the city would make in the infrastructure there, I, I think it holds a promise for any operators for, to be successful. So, going forward, I would, I would just say this, if, if you have any qualms about wanting more concerts or more events, because today really no more have occurred, and, and where I'm coming from is that in any transition, it takes time to either look at new attractions or book attractions and dovetail them in, and hopefully with the other venues that this company has, hopefully more can occur in the future. But, but if you want to have more attractions, people just loud and clear, need to attend, need to show up, and when you look at the state fair here in a month and a half from now, the four, the concerts that are referred to in your memo, four of those are state fair concerts. So, indeed, make sure you show up. But just for clarity, I wanted to go ahead and be here to have, ask those questions and appreciate your leadership so very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Steele.
Fair motion, council? Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution 2025-244.
Mr. Sheard.
Thank you, I'll second that.
Discussion, Mr. Brown.
Yes, I, you know, I'd just like to know who's gonna do the maintenance and the preventive maintenance on like chillers and boilers, and who's responsible for that? And how do we track that?
So, in terms of general maintenance, operating maintenance, Venue Works is responsible for that, and you'll see in their funding memo, they called out the unanticipated expenditures that were maintenance that they've had to do, due to kitchen repairs, building repairs.
I'm worried about like the boilers that never got maintenance.
We own the building. So, we own the building, and we will be responsible for capital repairs and improvements to the building.
So, who do we have that checks that out and make sure that preventive maintenance is getting done?
So, as you, preventive maintenance is something that we would schedule once we have it, but right now, if you recall, Honeywell is including the Heartland Event Center in their total engineering review. The five, five buildings that they're doing for the city, Heartland Event Center is one of those buildings. So, that engineering review and analysis is underway, and they've been consulting with our building department, with our fire department, with Chief Industries that constructed the building originally. So, all of that work is underway, and then they're, they'll come back with the recommendation, and then we will talk to finance about methods to pay for that.
And so, what you're telling me is really the city's in charge of any preventive maintenance or boilers or chillers or any of that big equipment?
Yes, yes.
Also, under the Honeywell, and this is coming to council, they have what they call M&amp;V. It's maintenance and verification, and they're looking at, there's five boilers, two are working, kind of three are not. And so, decision's gonna come to council, do we rebuild the three? Do we get, you know, just different combinations of stuff. So, the plan is to have a maintenance program.
That's what I was worried about.
Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out, my, for my, on my approval or motion to approve the resolution, the 20 years that Foner Park had managed a Heartland Event Center, all of the lodging tax went monthly, you know, to Foner Park for the operations, and it didn't really kind of come in the way that we're seeing it today. Right now, the city is collecting the lodging tax, and they're requesting up to $500,000. This is $200,000 tonight, but a total of $500,000 for the year, which is not significantly different than in any other prior year in the way it actually worked. But I would say at the end of the, the 20-some years that Foner ran it, this was a new facility at one point. It now, it's 20 years old, it's no different than anybody else's house. There are things that need to be replaced, and it's not that they weren't maintained, maybe there's some of that, but I, what I think is that, from all the time that I've spent there, I was on the Heartland Event Center Board as a council rep. I watched the maintenance. I looked at making sure that they were maintaining things. It's not perfect, they're not gonna fix all those things, the three boilers that didn't work, we knew that a long time ago. And so, the, the study was done. But I think from the city perspective, it's now time to take a new look, which is exactly what we're doing, trying to see what works, what doesn't work. Over the years, I've heard from all of my constituents, or many of them, talking about the entertainment value out there, the, the hearing, for example, you know, the audio part of a concert, and, and so, we know that. a concert, and so we know that there are improvements that need to be made. And that's what we're really trying to decide. We need to know as a council what needs to be fixed, and then we can decide with finance and the administration, how do we go about fixing the things that we need to fix? Because we're trying to give a great experience to anybody who comes to the Heartland Event Center, and that's what our goal really is, you know? And so it's a process, but it's, okay, we took a 20-year-old building, and now we're going to take a look at it, and that's what we're doing. So I want to make sure that the public knows that we're doing a great job of looking at it, we don't have the answers, we don't even know all the problems at this point. But that's what we're trying to go through with Honeywell and others, and so I appreciate everybody's help in trying to get us there. Thank you.
Good points, Mr. Hawsey.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Resolution 9C, approving fiscal year 2025 to 2026 annual budget for railside business improvement district and setting date for board of equalization. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. On August 14, 2018, City Council adopted ordinance 9700, creating the railside business improvement district. A proposed budget for the district be approved by the BID Board and forwarded to City Council for consideration. On June 11, 2025, railside BID Board met and approved a 2526 budget that provides for a total special assessment of $151,478.18. This is the same amount that was approved for this current year, so there is no increase. Owners will be assessed after approval of City Council sitting as a board of equalization on September 9, 2025. Notices will be published in the Grand Island Independent on July 26, August 2, and August 9. Copies of the notice will also be mailed to property owners after the first publication via the method required by state law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. O'Neil?
I move that we approve 2025-245.
And Mr. Brown?
I second that motion.
Any discussion? Mr. Stell?
I'm abstaining because I'm a property owner.
Thank you, Mr. Stell.
Please vote. Mitch also abstained, so Mayor, you would have to do the final vote.
I vote to approve the fiscal year 2025 to 2026 annual budget for railside business improvement district and setting date for board of equalization.
Motion adopted.
Nine D, approving fiscal year 2025 to 2026 annual budget for Fourth Street Business Improvement District and setting date for board of equalization. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. On September 12, 2023, City Council adopted ordinance 9941, creating the Fourth Street Business Improvement District. Their created ordinance requires a proposed budget for the district to be approved by the BID Board and forwarded to City Council for consideration. The 2526 budget provides for a total special assessment of $40,000. Assessments are paid by the property owners based on county assessors' valuation of the property. Owners will be billed for assessments after approval by City Council sitting as the board of equalization on September 9, 2025. Notices will be published in the Grand Island Independent on July 26, August 2, August 9. Copies of the notice will also be mailed to property owners after the first publication via the method required by state law. The BID pays the city a fee of $2,200 for accounting services. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brown?
I move we approve 2025-TAC-246.
Mr. O'Neil?
I second.
Mr. Nickerson?
We have Rashad and we have Norma here. I know you've represented that group. Would either one of you want to come up and answer a couple of questions for me? Rashad volunteered, thank you, Rashad. Is this year two now, are we starting year two of this? Time flies, or is this year three?
So we'll be starting year three.
This is year three already? Holy cow. So you probably have a good idea of what's going on, or at least you have a finger on the pulse of what's going on in Fourth Street Group. Do you feel, do they feel that things are starting to progress? I know we see the lighting going up and a lot of those things. Do we see some progress and feeling of accomplishment that it's doing what it was intended? Just, I guess it's going to be your opinion.
Short answer, yes. It took a while to get to that point. I know that there are some discouragements just because the progress was slow, but everything takes time, and the reason why progress in, for the BID was slow is also based on when the assessments are being paid. And so, you know, everything on paper shows that you have funds, but you can't spend it until it comes in, and so that progress took some time, and everything's starting to move in the right direction.
Good. I appreciate that, and I saw some more light, I think some light poles going up, up there today, and so it's going to change a lot of the complexion of that area, which is great, and then other projects that they have on the books as well. So I was just kind of curious, there's been change in leadership as well, it sounds like people have, you know, moved, not on the board anymore, and you're going to see that happen. So it's all progress in one sense or another, but I was just curious of your opinion, it sounds like things are going in the right direction, and that's good. Thank you.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Resolution 9E, approving Patrick Brown as interim finance director slash city treasurer. Mrs. McAlune?
Thank you, Mayor. Pursuant to Nebraska revised statute, section 16-308 and Grand Island City Code, section 2-39, the city of Grand Island must have a city treasurer or slash finance director. This position became vacant after July 11 with the departure of Matt Gleason. To fill the position, even on a temporary basis, the mayor must make an appointment, which must be approved by council. The Assistant City Administrator and Chief Financial Officer, Patrick Brown, has previously served the city of Grand Island very well as finance director treasurer, and is skilled and experienced in the performance of these job duties. As such, the mayor has appointed Mr. Brown to serve as acting finance director, city treasurer, effective July 11, 2025, and is seeking approval of his decision from the city council. The city administration recommends that the city council approve the appointment of Pat as the acting finance director, city treasurer.
Thank you, Mrs. McAlune. Mr. Hawsey?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve 2025-247.
Mr. Brown?
I second that motion.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Ordinances, counsel, we do not have enough members tonight to suspend the statutory rules regarding ordinances, so these three ordinances will be on first reading only. 10A, consideration of vacating part of a road easement and a utility easement, 211 Madaro Drive. Mr. Nabadi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm here tonight.
We overlooked the other occasion.
Thank you, I truly appreciate that.
You've been an excellent presenter and attender, so...
I'm going to make this really quick. We've got two easements. You just approved the Hatch subdivision. The Hatch subdivision dedicated a new easement across property to the east of, or to the west of this, so the road easement continues all the way to, all the way up to the north end of the property. This piece right here connected to Madaro Drive down here, it makes no sense. It maybe made sense 20 years ago when this was done, but at this point it doesn't. Mr. Hatch asked to have it vacated and to have a utility easement located here that was in place when they were pumping sand and gravel there. So it's just vacating these two easements. We've replaced at least one of these with the plat you just approved.
Thank you, Mr. Nabadi. Mr. Hawsey?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve ordinance number 10027 on first reading.
Mr. O'Neil?
I second.
Discussion?
Ordinance number 10,027, an ordinance to vacate a part of an existing road easement and a utility easement as shown on the Firethorn Estates Second Subdivision and part of Lot 2, Firethorn Estates Second Subdivision, and to provide for filing this ordinance in the Office of the Register of Deeds of Hall County, Nebraska, and to provide for publication effective date of this ordinance. Please vote. Motion adopted.
Ordinance 10B, consideration of vacating ingress egress easement located at 1941 and 1949 Trinity Street. Mr. Nabadi?
And this should say easement vacation, not easement acquisition, because I just copied the slide and changed the pictures from the acquisition earlier. This is to actually vacate this easement that is on lots 48 and 49 of Trinity Heights subdivision, and it was replaced by the one you just acquired. So just moving things around a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Nabadi. Mr. Brown?
Move we approve 10,028.
Mr. Stell?
I second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion?
Ordinance number 10,028, an ordinance to vacate an existing ingress egress easement acquired from Mezzaner Development Company located with plating of Trinity Heights subdivision in parts of lots 48 and 49 Trinity Heights subdivision, and to provide for filing of this ordinance in the Office of the Register of Deeds of Hall County, Nebraska, and to provide for publication and effective date of this ordinance. Please vote. Motion adopted.
Ordinance 10C, consideration to amend various provisions of the city of Grand Island's Good Life District Economic Development Program as codified in Grand Island City Code as Chapter 38, Article 2, to authorize any other actions necessary to implement the program and to provide for publication and an effective date of this ordinance. Mrs. Fisk?
Mayor and members of council, this is the ordinance that we told you would be coming when we discussed the changes that LB 707 brought to our Good Life District program. Those key changes, as we discussed at that June 10 meeting, are also summarized in your council packet, but just generally to give you a quick overview, they include statutory changes that clarify that the Good Life District boundaries can no longer be expanded, that we will stop collecting our own and imposing our own Good Life District occupation tax at the close of the third quarter of this year, the end of September 30, and the state will take over imposing that tax and will then refund us a portion of that money. It places some limitations on what can be spent out of the Good Life District program funds, limits what they call non-revenue producing expenditures. It will, ideally speaking, the state's tax scheme will replace most of the money we were obtaining. There is a $5 million cap on those existing businesses, and then a formula for the new businesses, so we'll see a reduction in some of the funds available, but not a fatal reduction. We also included in this ordinance some updates to the application process to reflect just some lessons learned to kind of speed things up, some documents we want to have and to update some of those processes. And it also changes some of the reporting requirements to reflect the requirements of LB 707. So nothing that substantively changes the entirety of the program, but a lot of housekeeping changes and a lot of updates required by LB 707.
Mr. Stell? Wait, pardon me, we have somebody who would like to speak on this. Mr. Scott Reef, would you like to speak?
Scott Reef with, so 3481 West Shimmer Road. Really, I just wanted to speak, let you guys know that if, there are opportunities with local developers. I think whenever, anytime you can invite multiple developers to an area, it really helps spur growth. I think one great example is Prairie District and Prairie Commons. When you get two developers in there, it can make a big difference. Sometimes, I know you guys aren't aware of people interested, but I do think there is a lot of local developers interested in this area. It's a large piece of land, so I just, not only for myself, but for other developers, I think in the future it'd be great if there's an opportunity for other developers to be involved with it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Reef, and thank you for being here. Mr. Stell?
I move for approval of ordinance number 10,0029.
Mr. O'Neil?
I second that we approve 10,029.
For discussion, Mr. Sheard?
Thank you. Couple of questions, start, carry. With the changes here, does that mean that Woodsonia needs to reapply or a different application? Because I understand, we haven't received an application from them yet.
So in the discussions with Woodsonia, I believe they're working on what they're going to call an amended application to reflect some of these changes, make some of these updates there, so you will see an amended application come in from them.
You know when?
My understanding is that they are nearing the end of that application. They have not given an exact date, but we have received updates, they're working on that, so hopefully soon.
Yeah, hopefully.
My guess is they'll wait probably until we get to final reading on this ordinance because they'll need that amended application to reflect some of these changes, so it's possible that going to second or third reading may delay that, but I'm not sure.
Which would be two weeks from tonight would be the next reading, correct?
August 11.
If there's enough to suspend the rules next week, you can do the second and final, or not next week, next meeting, yeah.
So let's assume that happens. How soon after that will we have an application ready to go for them to complete? That day?
Yeah, they'll be able, they have already, I think, seen the packet with the proposed ordinance, and I think are working on getting a compliant application.
Okay.
So probably as fast as they can get their paperwork done.
This group has talked a couple of times about the pace that this is going. I think we're all very excited, and I don't think any of us have changed our opinion about what we want to see this project come to be, at least not in a meeting that I have heard that that's changed. I guess, Mayor Administration, what is our thought on how fast we can move? We have previously talked about different options, hoping that things would move pretty quickly. Where do we stand as far as being able to push this along?
Well, I'll give you my opinion. I'm going, I'm hearkening back to June 4, our June 4 meeting, and we took this matter up then, and I remember Mr. O'Neil mentioned he didn't want the paralysis that comes from just waiting and waiting. My personal opinion is Woodsonia has had ample time to get an application in, that's my personal opinion, and, you know, the council, we can always invite other applicants, or the council could say tonight to direct city administration to issue an RFP to see if there's other interest out there, or maybe give Woodsonia additional time, because Mrs. Fisk did mention, you know, we're not going to get the final on this amended ordinance until at least another meeting. So my opinion is that they've had time, and Woodsonia has done a lot of good in this community, but, you know, the first go-around before we had LB 707, it got drug out awfully long, so I think, I think the people expect us to move with dispatch. I don't think that's an unreasonable expectation. So, you know, it's up to this council. We can prod Woodsonia to say the council desire us to see a completed application from them or from others, and we haven't, we haven't done that because we haven't had any feedback from the council. I would suggest the council provide us a prod, just because we are interested in getting this moving, and so I don't think it's unreasonable to say, you know, by the time of the next meeting, we're going to take final action on this ordinance, to say, you know, you should have your application in by then.
And I would note, counsel, any direction you want to give would need to be placed on the agenda for discussion at the next meeting to make sure we're open meetings act compliant.
Right. Yeah, I mean, we haven't been, we haven't been ignoring this issue, it's just a matter for the council. It's just a matter for the council to give us some direction as to how you want to go.
And I appreciate all that. I said, I was in a meeting today with, got the business card in my pocket, I think you were too, Mr. Mayor. No, with Victus Advisors today, who is doing a feasibility study on this. And I asked Walter Franco, the fellow running it, when we would see the results of that feasibility study. I was hoping he'd say, yeah, later tomorrow. But he's looking like, probably it'll get back to the folks that ordered it by mid to late September. Which, I know, I've shared my frustrations with you that I wanted this done tonight. It does throw another wrench into this, to figure out what we would ask for if it's not feasible to do what Woodsonia has told us to do.
But doesn't that just pertain to the size and scope of the sports complex?
Perhaps.
And, which to me means, how big do you make the facility? I don't know if that changes. I don't know if a change like that would change an application much, if an applicant had to react to that.
Boy, I don't know. Because if they say, yeah.
I got the same answer you did.
Yeah.
And I didn't like the answer. Okay?
Yeah, it was aggravating, because it throws a wrench into this. But I agree. I think, I think we have to have the discussion as a council, and know if we want to move this faster, or, I'll echo it. I think Ryan was right when he said it, we can't be paralyzed on this issue. We can't wait as long as we've done so far. And I think what Scott mentioned tonight is true, too. I think there could be more people itching to be a part of this project that could do some great things as well. So, I'd like to see us look at an RFP process. And I think finding a date, whether it's August 15th or September 15th, whatever that needs to be, that we say, if we don't have an agreed-upon by this council, application from Woodsonia, at that point, we open it up to others.
That would just need to be placed on the next agenda for that consideration, making sure we stayed germane to the topic in front of you.
Right. And what we as city staff can do is, we can go ahead and work on finalizing that RFP, and then you tell us when you want it released. But we can have it ready to go. We could release it the next day with publication requirements. I mean, we could initiate the process for releasing an RFP if we have it done. Pat and I have both been doing research and due diligence with other jurisdictions, and we have some really good examples.
Excellent. As far as the rest of this that we're actually talking about tonight, Carrie, sorry.
No, you're good.
Point of order on myself. I think, yeah, I'm in favor of us getting this all in line. I just needed to know how that's going to.
One step closer.
Yep, how that's going to impact our timeline. So, thanks for your work on it.
Mr. Brown.
I agree with Jack and the mayor, and Ryan. We need to work on, do this right away. Anyway, the one good thing about this legislation is that when they get a receipt with what they bought at the store, it just says state sales tax. You don't have a list of them. So, that's not going to be confusing anymore, and you're not going to get all those calls that we've got seven different taxes on that thing. So, that's a good thing.
Mr. O'Neil.
I have just a few things here. So, one of the first things that's talked about was the tax study for the revenue. And so, that's already in the works, and we have an expected completion date on that here in the near future. So, we have kind of a timeline there. I appreciate the comments of Mr. Reeve earlier as well, just kind of knowing there's interest in other developers here, too. And I remember talking about this earlier of, you know, we wanted to give some time, but not too much time. And the way I kind of see it is, there's one day of the year that more things get accomplished than any other day in the year, and that's someday. And we can't wait for someday. You know, I like the idea of having a deadline and a timeline, what Jack is saying. And I really support the idea of saying, you know, we need to know all proposals by this date. If not, we need to do something else. We have to get it done. And the only way we're going to do that is set a timeline. But, thank you.
Mr. Nickerson.
My question is just for Jill, for minute purposes. Do we have to indicate this is on first reading in writing here? Does that matter?
Yeah, I have it on mine. It just doesn't come over on your guys' screen.
Oh, okay, you do have it on yours?
Yeah.
Okay, first reading. That's all I wondered.
Sorry, no more other discussion. Ordinance number 10,029, an ordinance to amend various provisions of the City of Grand Island's Good Life District Economic Development Program as codified in Grand Island City Code as Chapter 38, Article 2, to authorize any other actions necessary to implement the program and to provide for publication and effective date on this ordinance. Please vote. Motion adopted.
Excellent meeting, council members. We have completed our agenda. We are adjourned.